I'd like to call the regular village board meeting to order for the villages Sherwood on April the fourteenth of the year 2020. Due to the circumstances tonight, I'm going to forego the Pledge of Allegiance, just through logistics, and move right on to roll call. Diane, would you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Chapman?
Here.
Dan Anderson?
Here.
Steve Brockman?
Here.
DC DeBolt?
Here.
Barb Kirkland?
Here.
Tony Luciano?
Here.
And Dan Warren?
Yes.
Hey, look what the show that there's a forum, regular village business can be done tonight. If anybody has a problem hearing me, please say we can't hear you, and I'll try to speak up as loud as I can. I'd like to also say that because of the situation tonight, and the possibility that it's hard to recognize somebody by just gesturing towards them or looking in their direction, it's the same way coming back. So, let's, uh, at least try not to talk over each other, let the person who's speaking. And then announce yourself and speak. It works fine during our, during our, maybe two cover seats. Uh, if anybody has to do, uh, to have your mic open and you have a lot of sound in the background, uh, you can also mute your mic until you have something to say, and that allows everybody to speak without, without being drowned out, okay? And I'll do the same. So, all right, with all that being said, I'm going to move on to any citizens. If any citizens that are on our, uh, broadcast tonight, and on this, uh, electronic hookup that wish to, uh, address the village board.
Mayor, it's, uh, Dave Silverman, can I make a comment at this point?
You sure can.
Thank you. I, you know, I think we should just have the record reflect in the minutes that this meeting is being conducted electronically, uh, pursuant to the various orders issued by the government, uh, excuse me, by the governor, who has waived, uh, certain requirements for electronic participation in, uh, government meetings, according to the Ober Meetings Act. And also that on the agenda notice of the meeting, uh, the public was invited, uh, to join this call, and given the same call and information and passwords, uh, that the, that the, uh, members of the village board and other staff members were given. So certainly the public was invited, uh, to attend this meeting. And also, uh, in that notice and that agenda, uh, there was an opportunity for public to provide any comments that they wanted to, uh, with an email address that was set forth there. So, thank you, I just wanted to get those, uh, notes into the record.
All right, Diane, did you get all that?
I sure did. Uh, one thing though, I need to know who else is on the call. Um, I know Kelly Christie is on, and Dave Silverman, and I'm assuming Ann Burkholder. Is that it, or is there more people?
John from the building department as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Chief's online.
Okay, anybody? And?
Jim's on the line as well.
Well, I would hope so, again.
(laughing) Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I didn't hear any, uh, citizens, uh, speak up. I'm going to move on to tonight's consent agenda. That consists of, number one, approval of a special meeting of February the eighteenth. Uh, number two, approval of the regular meeting minutes for March the tenth. Number three, approval of accounts payable in the amount of one million, eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars and one cent. Approval of a payment in the amount of forty-one thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars to the fields on Tate and Fox for 2019 airstream replacement program. Number five, business registration fee waiver for Troy Community School, Western Thirty-C. Number six, request to facilitate the order of personal protective equipment from the mirror international trading. And finally, approval of an order of personal protective equipment from the Vertique USA. Are there any items on tonight's consent agenda trustee would like removed for the review? Are there any questions on tonight's agenda? And we do have those upfront questions with the minutes.
This is, I would ask that the February eighteenth minutes be from the consent agenda. At this time, there's some corrections that need to be made.
Okay, anyone else?
I approve, I make a motion to approve the, uh, agendas with, uh, exception for the eighteenth, uh, minute, minutes being, uh, tabled.
Second, DeBolt, yeah, DeBolt, the second, whoever.
So, Anderson, Anderson and DeBolt?
Yeah.
Okay. And Cookie, could you email me the discrepancy, please?
I will.
Okay.
Okay. Diane, roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
DeBolt?
Yes.
Kirkland?
Yes.
Luciano?
Yes.
Ann Warren?
Yes.
The, the consent agenda stands as amended. Like to move on to reports and communications, uh, Diane, any communications still call?
No, Mayor, there is not.
Mayor, this is John. Uh, I just wanted to add that, uh, we have not received any email comments to the email address posted at the top of the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Just had to take care of the parking door, please. Okay, uh, as far as my report goes, okay? What I like to say is that, uh, for the most part, uh, what I'm seeing, uh, out and about is that people are doing the best they can. Uh, there's some early on in this crisis that, uh, may not have believed it was a crisis, but I think they caught on pretty quick over the last couple of weeks. Uh, the numbers that I see the chief can verify this is that worse versus, uh, H, H-1N-1, and SARS is like three times worse, and ten times quicker. So, uh, anybody, if, if they've talked to any of you trustees about this crisis, and they want to go into a conspiracy theory or whatever, that's fine, uh, because everybody's got an opinion. Uh, we are going to operate along with the governor and his instructions, uh, and try to maintain a distance factor, also try to maintain the stay-at-home factor when, when we can. And I think it's up to us to lead exactly by example. When people see us out, if, if they don't see us doing that type of thing, they look at it as, that it's a joke, that, okay? So, it's up to everybody. Let's, uh, try to get this thing behind us as quick as possible. I'll give you, uh, I'll give you one thing that I just got. Hokkaido, Japan, which was stricken, um, uh, in mid-January. Uh, that's a very highly populated area of Japan. It, it went to the, it crusted, it flattened, and then it dropped down to where they were having no cases. They went back to work three weeks ago, now the, now the virus is spiking again in Hokkaido. They went back into a lockdown mode. So, just to give you an idea of what can happen out there, and just how, how this virus is, is acting. It's probably the most dangerous we've seen on the planet at, uh, well, at least for now. So, anyways, my report is, I think Sherwood's in, in, uh, as good a shape as, uh, as probably most of them, if, if, if not better. Now, what I'd like to do is open it up to the chief to go ahead and give us a couple of minute update on what our, as the program's been doing, and I'd like to give the chief a pat on the back. He's taken on almost the entire county, and we're letting through, uh, a lot of communications that we do together. And, uh, so chief, if you're there, how about giving us a little bit of an update on what you guys expect?
Uh, good evening, Mayor. Um, as everybody knows, we're several weeks into this, and things are going very well. Um, we have bi-weekly meetings with all of our disciplines in the village and associated stakeholders, so there's, there's excellent, uh, communication and workflow between all village departments and all of the entities associated with the village. The different, uh, police, fire, public works agencies are in constant communication with our regional partners, those touching us, those throughout the county. There's been a, a great deal of communication and cooperation, so that, that all has proven very effective with all of the relationships that we have established over the many, many years of, uh, working on other entity, o- other issues and other things. So, this is something different, quite different. Everybody's learning as we go along. There's been very good direction from the county and the state. Um, I identified today on our conference call that I think we're in that, that phase right now where everybody's adapted to the, the stay-at-home order that was extended to the end of the month, and now that we're, you know, well into that, the natural human tendency is to be like, what else and what's next? And without any firm direction, particularly timelines for direction from the state, uh, we're all kind of having an opportunity to, one, be patient, but, two, take some time to contemplate what a phased, uh, approach back to normalcy is going to be, and how that's going to come. I mean, people that watch the news, um, I've, I've been very clear from the very beginning to make sure that we're listening to sound advice and, and reasonable and reliable sources of information, because we all know there's, there's a lot of opinion out there. So, Governor Pritzker gives press conferences every day at two-thirty, he's very good about forecasting what he's going to do maybe a couple of days later. Um, but right now, we, nobody really knows what the timelines are going to be, because this in and of itself is that critical week where everybody expects it to peak, and then perhaps hopefully start to wane next week. So then, I think the guidance will come, we'll know in what format that comes, and we'll know how long that's going to take to get back to normal. Um, some of the guidance that we've seen so far is relative to, you know, travel and what vacations might look like, as well as large events relative to antibody testing, vaccines, and those sorts of things. So, we're all waiting for that very clear guidance, so that we all know what we can and can't do, and then how we're going to go about doing it. So I ask everybody out there to, to be patient. Uh, the stay-at-home program is going relatively well, most people have been very responsible. We do have isolated instances, which we deal with on a isolated basis. Um, today, I pushed out social media relative to the new do-your-part, which the state HEMA and IDPH and everybody sponsored, and it's basically, you know, stay at home, wash your hands, do the right thing. If you're not doing it for yourself, doing it for somebody that you know, because undoubtedly everybody out there knows of somebody or knows somebody personally that's been afflicted by this. So, um, you know, we, we try to help everybody out. Today was that, uh, Tuesday, Takeout Tuesday. Hopefully everybody got their Portillo's or whatever they got out there from the different restaurants in town. I haven't had a chance to go out to see how busy it was today, but if the past tells me anything, uh, there were plenty, plenty of people through the drive-throughs, which is a good thing to see. And if anybody has any questions or concerns, they can always contact the village. While the departments are working, the numbers are posted on the village website, so you'll be able to get ahold of any department that you need. If you need police and fire, we're always there, and, uh, we're there to help. So just call us if you need us.
Okay. Uh, now, you know, because this is such an unprecedented, uh, situation that we're in right now, uh, is anybody else, I'd like to open up this part of the meeting, has anybody else got a statement or, or anything that they would like to, to ask, especially the chief? Or just an observation that they've made, and that we could do something better, okay? Or whatever, I'm just opening it up right now for, for any comment such as that. Okay? If, uh, nobody's announcing themselves, so I thank everybody for, uh, and like I say, the chief, when you do get to see him, I know you can't shake hands with him, but you could kinda, just kinda nod, give him a heads up. He's been working, working his butt off, okay? So, anyway, uh, we'll move on to tonight's order of business. And business item number one, consideration for approval of a resolution adopting the village of Sherwood budget for fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. Uh, Ann, would you like to take it?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, everybody. Um, I know it seems like ages since we were all together, and we had an opportunity to go over the budget, uh, but there were no material changes coming out of our budget workshop back in February. Um, this was a draft that was prepared for the meeting in March, we did not have. Um, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Yeah.
I'm so sorry I missed that.
No, I'm gonna take it as, unless somebody came out and I didn't hear, I'm gonna take that as, uh, there are no questions for you when it comes to this budget? Well, I know, everybody's been involved in it and piecing it together, so, uh, that's not strange.
I don't have any questions, but, and this may not have anything to do with it, but this is kind of a good time, I guess, as any, I just wanted to point out that, uh, on the financial report that was in our packet, that there's a created line item for COVID-19 that, uh, it's for possibly getting reimbursed, uh, for some of the equipment that's going to be purchased.
Uh, yeah, that's correct.
Now, go ahead, Ann.
Uh, thank you. Um, in the new bud, in the new fiscal year, we did create, um, a few line items specifically for COVID-related expenses, so we could track them more clearly. Um, we did not amend the budget to include those, um, just because we, we really don't know how likely it is that we'll get a reimbursement, so, um, anything we're able to recoup on that would, would just be, um, you know, even better off than what we're projecting.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'm gonna take it, if there's not another question, I'll give you one, uh, five more seconds. If there is none, I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, the Sherwood budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one.
So move. Second, DeBolt.
Who said the, uh?
Anderson, Anderson.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, uh, Diane, roll call, please.
Warren?
Yes.
Luciano?
Yes.
Kirkland?
Yes.
DeBolt?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
The budget, uh, for twenty twenty-one has been approved. Now, just a caveat to that is, uh, because of anything that could, could happen to our revenue streams, we don't know, uh, Ann has, Ann and the administrator have been asked to kind of put a scenario together with certain revenue losses, and then report to the board, uh, possibly in the next month, uh, to see if maybe we have to make some changes to the budget at that time. Ann, any comment on that?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. We'll be happy to do that. Um, some of the impacts are going to be difficult for us to know. As, as you may know, the reporting on sales tax from the time of the transaction to the time we know about it is about three months. So we could be well into the summer before we've got, um, some actionable information. Um, but we'll, we'll certainly keep our, keep our eye on, on what's going on, what, um, what kind of guidance we're given from a variety of sources. Um, with all of that being said, um, now that the vote is approved, we'll get that electronic copy on the website, and then once, um, things are back to normal, we'll get some hardcover printed.
Okay, any more questions for Ann? If that, I'm gonna move on to business item number two. In consideration for approval of a resolution providing certain emergency relief for village waters, shore, and refuse charges. Uh, Jim, and then, uh, you know, I would like to ask if, if all the trustees, uh, would see, uh, my comments through the email? If anybody didn't, please speak up. Okay, so you did get my comments, uh, and suggestions and reasons why I asked Jim to put this together. So, Jim, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so what was in your packet is, is a program that I believe I've spoken with, uh, each of, uh, members of the board. And the, the one thing that has changed, and that was as recent as this afternoon, uh, was some language, um, that further clarifies who is eligible for this relief program. Uh, specifically, um, the mayor was looking for language that said that someone who filed for unemployment benefits as a result of the COVID nineteen, nineteen pandemic, um, would be eligible. Uh, so therefore, it, it would narrow it to just those individuals. So if somebody was, was, uh, receiving unemployment insurance prior to the pandemic, um, you know, and they would not have had, um, their unemployment caused by the pandemic, therefore they wouldn't be eligible, uh, based upon this revised version, which was emailed out, just, uh, late this afternoon. Um, so some of the changes really just make that clarification, uh, that it needs to be, uh, an employment, uh, unemployment that occurred because of the COVID-19 pandemic. So obviously, this is, this is something that would be very, uh, difficult, if not impossible, to, to demonstrate proof of. Um, the demonstration of proof is still within the resolution that they are indeed, uh, approved for unemployment insurance. However, there isn't a, uh, a, a requirement that they demonstrate proof that it, it was because of COVID-19. So what, um, we would do under this proposal is that we would ask the, the resident to attest to and acknowledge the fact, um, that that is why, um, that they are receiving unemployment. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
In regards, DeBolt, in regards to your proposal to, for clarification of a date, would it, does it make any sense if you're trying to help identify if it's based from the COVID-19 pandemic? Would it, would a date of, uh, application have any bearing in this to help, uh, define if that's where this, uh, if that's where it came from? Knowing that the state issued an emergency order on, uh, March seventeenth?
We certainly could consider a date if that would help, um...
I, I, I don't know, I'm just throwing, I mean, if you're, you just referenced, uh, concern or not, you know, not necessarily being able to identify, I just don't know if the date on application, I don't know if you see that, I, I don't know how that works.
Yeah, I, I, I think, you know, we certainly could request...
Just throwing ideas out, that's all.
Yes, we certainly could request that, um, you know, in terms of the type of proof of unemployment insurance, you know, we, we're not requiring a specific document, uh, we're just putting it on the individual to demonstrate that with some sort of documentation, which may or may not have a date on it. Um, so a date could help. Um, you, you know, it is certainly possible that somebody was laid off after the seventeenth, and it had nothing to do with the pandemic too, uh, but we could certainly consider adding a date.
Yeah, and, go ahead.
Trustee, go ahead.
Uh, no, I mean, just trying, uh, reading the, uh, reading through on, on the second page where, so before anybody gets a second month's waiver, uh, the affirmative, so they've already have to have the application, are they gonna have to reapply for a second month? We're trying to, we're understanding as to how that's gonna work.
Right, so there'd be...
Uh, Jim, let me take that, if you please, uh, what we have to do is reestablish it, because you, are you talking about the second month, or after the second month?
Well, well, both for that matter. Uh, the application refers to, you know, the application says, or, or this, let me back up. The resolution states no household may receive waiver for more than two months, uh, whi- which is fine, but how does, you know, do they have to apply when they make their application? Are they applying for a two-month, two-month waiver, or are they asking for one, or, or how is that part of, gonna be established?
Yeah, it'll be on the application, uh, wouldn't you say, uh, Mr. Colata?
Yeah, so, so there would be a, uh, a statement, you know, that we would ask the resident to basically affirm, you know, affirm their, their status when it comes to that. Uh, so that would be a requirement, um, in order to receive that second month. There wouldn't be any additional documentation that would be required, um, the way it's proposed. It would just be an affirmative statement that they would make, that they continue to be on unemployment insurance.
And then how long is it gonna take, uh, since it's written here for Mr. Colata to approve? What, what do you, uh, view that it's gonna take to vet these or approve these timewise once somebody submits an application? Are we talking more so there? Is it gonna take a day, two, a week?
Well, I, I would say that if someone provides, um, documentation which is clear, um, then I think it would be a matter of a day. Um, you know, if there's some, if someone does apply but doesn't perhaps submit doc- Um, you know, if there's some, if someone does apply but doesn't perhaps submit documentation, you know, then it's an incomplete application and, and obviously it would take longer. Uh, we wouldn't be able to consider that application until they do complete it. Um, but I would imagine, uh, being able to, uh, review these, uh, within twenty-four hours.
No, that's fine. That's all I'm looking for. A properly completed application could be reviewed in as quick as a day.
Correct.
Okay, any other, any other questions?
Twenty-four hours, don't say day though, because a day is different in some people's minds. You gotta say twenty-four hours, correct? Do you know I'm wrong?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I always wanna make sure it's, we're not expecting a day, we're expecting twenty-four hours.
Yeah, and I think that's realistic. I think that's completely realistic.
Right. Well, some people think a day is eight hours, so, you know, so that's what I'm.
That's why you call it a podcast.
I never have an eight-hour day.
Okay, any other, any other questions?
Uh, this is Cookie. I have a couple things.
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, one thing I wanted to bring up was under item G, where it says the admini- the village administrator may charge for water sewage deemed to be excessive. Waters used to crush things, has lawn watering, filling a swimming pool, and other non-household uses. I would like to see that changed to will instead of may. I feel like those things are luxury items that are not required for, you know, to keep the household up and I don't think, um, I think that's, that they could choose to either hold off on or be on their own. So I would like to see that changed, if, unless somebody has a problem with it.
To will instead of may?
Correct.
Okay, uh, anybody see a problem with that?
No, I can agree with that.
No, I have to agree. If we're, if we're gonna waive their, waive their water bills, yeah, we can't just let them water grass excessively, fill a swimming pool, anything like that. It's a valid point.
Yeah, do you have that?
Yes, we can make that change.
Okay.
Okay. The other thing I have is, I, I'm just wondering, this kind of, uh, ties it down a little better and I, I appreciate that because it, it's a little clearer. I still have a concern with people that are not eligible for unemployment who have suffered a financial hardship because of the COVID nineteen and their hours have been cut enough that it's hurting them financially but not enough to be eligible for unemployment. I think we need to have either something, uh, added to this resolution or something in place that these people have somewhere to go if, if that's the case. I think there's gonna be more of them than the people on unemployment myself, my, my thought.
Um.
How do you verify that?
Well, the only thing I would say, I was trying to figure that out. The only thing I thought of was maybe, um, a person could bring some type of statement from their employer that says your hours to, you know, your hours are cut in half because of, you know, temporarily cut because of COVID nineteen or s- I mean, you know, if a guy, if, if a family's really struggling, then I would think that in most cases, the employer would try to help them out to, because of this, because everybody's struggling with this. So, I mean, that was the only thing I came up with. I don't know if I threw it out there, thought maybe somebody had an idea. I just, you know, since this is the first time we're discussing this as a group, I, I wanted, you know, I kinda wanted everybody's thoughts or.
Yeah, I don't know how you verify it other than, you know, um, having a letter from the employer or, you know, case, case-by-case person, uh, or case-by-case talking to the administrator about it maybe.
Well, I just think we need to open, to have people know that that avenue, whatever the avenue is that that's available to them and I, oh, you know, I, I mean, maybe we need to figure it out, maybe we need to, you know, come back in two weeks and, and, and work it. I don't know. I don't know. I just think that it's something we need to address.
Well, and I, I would agree because I know a couple of people in that, in that situation. Uh, what I was trying to get here, uh, to Jim and, and the staff was something that is reasonably, uh, it can be done quickly, it can be done, uh, well, very efficiently. I, you know, I'm not naive. I realize that there's gonna be people that, that try to, uh, get this, you know, a small amount as it is in some cases, uh, that are gonna actually put in the application and they don't deserve it. If, if we get ninety to ninety-five percent, or ninety percent right and the people actually are in that situation and we can help them out in, in a small fashion to where that's one less thing to have to worry about. On the other hand, I, I agree and I think that you could send in some ideas to the administrator and, and on how that would be worked. Okay, and, uh, because we can put this in place tonight. That would be a beginning and get started to help some people and then, and then we could, uh, you know, try not to violate the Open Meetings Act. Uh, we could, uh, put some ideas around for how we might help somebody like, uh, Key Young down at the corner of Main Street, okay? I would love to be able to help that woman out, okay? So, uh, would that be okay? We, we could start something else. We could do this and that could be another thing. We don't need to incorporate that into this one.
I would suggest just sending it back to the staff and see if they have a way of, uh, how they can deal with it. And then they come back and do it. E- even as I think, uh, trustee Anderson referenced, even if there's a way of somehow incorporating the additional case-by-case basis or somehow of, uh, a general phrase almost like, uh, uh, well, you know, GH, a line H somehow that kind of creates a, a vague statement that can be, uh, others can be evaluated by case-by-case. I don't know if that's a simple way of incorporating some loopholes in there, but I, I don't know how you really phrase it.
I think that, you know, that's a reasonable idea. With that, uh, trustee Kirkland, would that satisfy what you're thinking?
Yeah, I just want, I just wanna make sure, I, I, I mean, even if someone just calls and, calls the village and they're like, Walt, you know, I'm not getting unemployment, but I can't pay my bill. I, you know, I want us to be able to help those people and, but I think we need to have some kind of direction in place for the administrator that, because I, I, I would hate to put that on somebody to, you know, well, my friend came in, I know they need it, so we'll give it to them, but the next guy, then I didn't really believe him, so he ain't getting it. We need, I think we need to come up with something and I'm, you know, we're looking out for a way that needs it. That's my goal.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so currently, we can, yeah, that, so we can always amend this, correct? So why don't we just come up with some ideas, pass them on, email, and we'll figure that out and we can go on from there. But we can always amend this current form or open a new resolution, correct?
Yeah, because this one would get the staff working on the application and getting it, uh, implemented, uh, getting it approved with the application, uh, you know, we need to give the administrator direction that they put together the application form and get it on our internet, get it on our webpage. But that could be a separate program from what you're describing because we do that now. There are people that actually have approached the village and I'm sure Ann can attest to this, that, that are struggling. Some of them actually went over to the township to get an, an assistance out of the township to pay their water bill, okay? So we do have people that are in those types of situations now.
Quick question. Would, would the, would this suffice for everybody? Uh, a line H that simply states any other claim to be evaluated case-by-case by the administrator? Would that summarize it?
If it gets us through tonight, I would say yes.
I, I was curious if that would be enough. I, I don't know if that would be enough. I mean, I know it's gonna put a little more work on the administrator on that aspect, but it might create that opening if you have somebody kind of as, as Ms. Kirkland has referenced, if you have an individual or a household that's had hours reduced and, like you said, they're not unemployed, but at least it would give that ability to apply under this. I mean, it's gonna put a little more work, I think, on, on staff to, to verify that by all means. Um, I'm just throwing it out there. I wonder if, if that might be an easy enough sentence just to add.
I think we need to come up, I think this needs to be added on later because there's too many questions, like how do you verify it? How do you approve it? How do you know? I mean, I don't wanna just put it on there and people think that, okay, if I go there and I make this claim and, okay, we're gonna approve it, but there's no verification. At least with this, we have verification of the unemployment insurance. We have knowledge of it, right? But if we just put that right there, I, and I'm fully, I'm fully on board with helping anybody we can as long as it makes sense. I'm just not confident right now putting that in there at this time because I, like you said, it's gonna put an overburdened, well, we don't know if it will or won't, but it's gonna probably put a burden on the staff and Jim to get this figured out and what criteria, well, I think we need criteria prior to adding that to it.
I would agree and I think we have time because we're not shutting anybody off for two months, period. Regardless of their situation, we're not shutting anybody off. So we got time to figure it out. I just wanna make sure we've done it, that's all.
Yeah, so would you be okay putting this slightly through tonight?
Me personally, yes. If we're looking into the other one.
Okay, uh.
Hey, Mayor, would you like to ask a question?
Huh? I, I, uh, this is Tony Luciano. I have, uh, several questions that I'd like to ask. Uh, one starting out being that we're basing this on unemployment insurance or unemployment compensation. And Cookie brings up a point where, uh, people who she is referring to probably have more need than people on unemployment compensation because based on the, uh, what I'm hearing about what the unemployment is, many people are getting quite a bit of money, more so than what they would've because it's a super unemployment. Uh, secondly, on that, uh, we're not cutting anyone off, so I don't see what the urgency is to put this in force right now. Adding a bunch of amendments later seems to me that we're gonna have a lot of things going in and out of this. I think maybe it might be better if we, uh, tabled this right now and gave the staff another two weeks to look at it where we can all take a good look at it and then approve it later. Because I, I believe that there's a lot of things that are missing from here that we should have in place. I mean, I'm all for helping any residents who need something, but I don't see us trying to, uh, give people who are receiving unemployment compensation relief for something that's not gonna be shut off right at this time. So I, I think is, I would like to see us put this on the, the table right now and look at it in two weeks and come up with what we want to do with all the amendments and give the staff to put everything that we're talking about.
Well, I also think approving this at this time and people hearing about it and knowing about it gives them some mental relief. They're not worried about, okay, I know they're not gonna shut me off, but I still have this bill in three, in two, whenever, I still have a bill that's gonna be doubled next month. I still have to make that payment. So I think this gives more mental and emotional relief.
Then I, I, you know, like I said, I like to see people get help, but I like to see some first-time rights and rather than just adding stuff to it. I don't know what relief we would be giving to people who aren't gonna be shut off and, and they. What I'm saying is, you know, sort them based on what the mayor mentioned in one of his, uh, talks in the last four times on YouTube.
Right, but, but what I'm saying is.
I just don't see as much interest in leaving it wide open.
This is a start. This is to get things going and moving. We don't have to add on to this at all. We could always come up with another resolution or, or add on to it. It, this is to get the ball going, people, get the things moving.
Can I ask you what this is?
It's good the way it is right now. If we have more, this, the next two weeks, we can come up and with questions and answers to the questions you're asking right now. How do we do this? How do we verify it?
Why don't we just wait? Because as far as I can see, at this particular point, this is doing nothing because we're not shutting up and, uh, doing any shut offs for them.
No, this, this is helping peace of mind.
It's helping people's mind.
Peace of mind, yes. We're not worried about it.
Table it and talk about it later because I, I don't think it's complete is what we, what we wanna go down to. And I think the basis of using unemployment compensation as a criteria is the wrong thing to be using because people who are getting unemployment compensation are receiving from. People who have lowered their wages because of being time cut back from their employers are not gonna get unemployment to, to be able to meet their bills. That's just my opinion on it. And I would like to see a stable it based on that.
Yeah, well, I guess I have to disagree with that. I'd like to get this moving and then we can continue to see how, how this system works. And if, if, if they've got a lot of flaws, then we can come in with the amendment. But there's a lot of people that have already been laid off and, and what I mean a lot, well, you know, probably in the village of Shorewood, you know, it, nobody's got a crystal ball. I don't. And, uh, so that those, those people that have been laid off that would, would like to hear that something like this is in place for them. Uh, so I would like to get this through tonight or turn it down. You can always vote against it.
Well, Mayor, like I, I mentioned, I am all for helping the people, but I would like to see this table and right now it would be a no vote on.
Well, make a motion to table it.
I'd like to make a motion to table, uh, this resolution, uh, till the next meeting until gives staff time to look it over and have trustees have more time to input some of the things we've been discussing.
I'll second.
The Ann roll call?
Kirkland?
Yes.
Luciano?
Yes.
Warren?
No.
DeBald?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Brockman?
No.
The mayor?
Mayor?
No.
Okay, so, no. So we're not taping it because it's four to three.
Uh, in that, in that matter, because we've had the discussion now on, on the table, I'd like to open us up to, to a motion to approve the resolution that provide emergency relief for the village water, sewer, and refuse charges as, as presented.
I'll make that motion. Anderson?
Second.
It would be as presented, right? Because we're gonna change the verbiage from May to will?
Yes.
Is, is that the only change we're making? I know there was a discussion earlier about a date being inserted. I just wanna be sure that the only.
That was up to Mr. Colata to look at whether the date would be appropriate or not.
Yeah, I just referenced the date. I don't know if it's beneficial or not. I, I just, that's all. I was referencing a date on there. I know that's in the emergency block and like proclamation was issued by the government. So I just don't know if that helps staff make a determination or not. Uh, uh, you know, that's just something, uh, you guys can kind of determine if that helps or not.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. So, well, if, if it's approved, we'll just make the one change to trustee Kirkland. Okay, thanks for that clarification, so, well, if, if it's approved, we'll just make the one change that Trustee Kirkland suggested.
Yeah. Okay, uh, local, Diane.
Debold?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Brockman?
Yes.
Kirkland?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
And Luciano?
No.
Uh, ten out of two stands approved, uh, the direction to the administrator, uh, uh, is pretty clear. You have a, a change to get put in there through, uh, through Dave, and, uh, and then, uh, put together an application for the website. Uh, does anybody have any more statements about that? What we can do is these, these other issues, stipulate, talk one-on-one, and, and see if we can come up with something, and I'll be thinking of it too, because I can say, I do understand that, and I definitely want to, uh, do the best we can, knowing that no plan that we put in place is gonna be perfect. If anybody thinks we can do that, then, you know, please step forward, or, uh, uh, we're all gonna be flawed, and this is something that we, we really never felt. Okay, so, at any rate, if there are no other comments, I'm gonna move on to reports. Trustee Anderson, Public Works.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple things, that, uh, our, our Public Works staff has been practicing social distancing, and they, uh, we've had limited crews, uh, outs doing the essentials in town. Uh, they've been out, uh, picking up trash, street sweeping, and, uh, uh, doing some of the mowing and mulching, mulching some of the mulch beds in the parks. Uh, I did have a, we did have a water main break last week out here, uh, or a water valve that, uh, was failed out here at Taylor Brook, and then we had a water main break out here in my front yard today. Uh, so, we had about three guys out here with a new hydro back truck, did a nice job, uh, you know, locating the, uh, water line and, and, uh, I guess, for lack of a better term, is a nice neat hole, instead of a big blob and a big mess, it's pretty nice. Um, but, you know, the guys are working and they're doing what they have to do, so. Uh, I, I think everybody, uh, uh, staff-wise, from, uh, police department to the village hall staff, uh, to our Public Works, they're doing a heck of a job with the circumstances that they're having to deal with. And, uh, I'd just like to say thanks to everybody for hanging in there, and, uh, that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, any questions for, uh, Trustee Anderson?
No, I would just like to echo Dan's comments about the village and staff, and everybody doing everything they can. It's greatly appreciated, and I'm sure all the residents agree.
You know what's great is everybody's staying healthy, too, and, uh, so I, I think they're practicing, uh, good distance factors, and hopefully, uh, hopefully everybody stays that way. And I'm, I'm including elected and staff, and, and the employees involved. Uh, okay, moving on, Trustee Brockman, Planning and Zoning Commission.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, our next meeting for planning and zoning was scheduled for May sixth. Uh, that's tentative as of right now, it could be changed to the twentieth. Uh, May instead, we'll update at the next board meeting i- in April. And, uh, Kelly has quite a list of agenda items, uh, if you'd like, I can read them off to you, that's up to you, Mayor, if you wanna, wanna list them or not, but there's about ten of them.
About ten of them, can they, can they email those out to us, right?
Yes, she can, so, she emailed me those, uh, earlier, uh, or yesterday, I guess it was, so. So, if she, if she could do that, and, uh, that would save some time, but, uh, so probably May twentieth, as of right now, okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Trustee Kirkland, Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, all programs for the month have been canceled. Refunds will be processed throughout the season. We appreciate your patience and time, all upcoming programs and events are being monitored, so, go to the village's website, up, left page.
Trustee, you're, you're breaking up pretty bad here.
Okay, hold on. I'll take you off speaker, is that better?
That sounds better, yeah.
Okay. So all of our programs for April have been canceled. Well, we will process refunds for anyone currently registered in programs. We appreciate your patience during this challenging time, and all upcoming programs and events are being monitored. So please stay tuned to the village website and also Facebook for more information. The events for April that have been postponed, postponed, not canceled, is the garage sale, and the village-wide cleanup after the garage sale through waste management, and also Earth Day and Arbor Day event. And then also, just a reminder that the playground and fitness equipment at all parks are closed and off-limits as ordered by the governor. In addition to playground equipment enclosed, group activities and gathering, gatherings are highly discouraged. Social distancing needs to be practiced, even when out in the parks. And that concludes my report, but I just wanted to, uh, piggyback on the other comments that the Dan's made, um, the great job that all the staff is doing to keep us looking as normal as we can be, so I appreciate it. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Trustee Luciano, Citizens Advisory Committee.
Uh, due to the governor's mandate ending April thirtieth, uh, we will be canceling the April twenty-third, uh, Citizens Advisory Committee meeting. Hopefully, we'll be able to, uh, have one in May. I just wanted to mention that, again, like Cookie and Dan mentioned, I think everyone's doing a great job. I know a lot of the residents are doing a lot of things, I'm getting emails from some of my committee members who are making masks and different things for hospitals in the community, or around, surrounding communities. So I just wanted to give, uh, thanks to all of those people, and thanks to everyone in the village, and everyone involved in this epidemic that we're facing, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Um, in closing, I'd like to also thank everybody, and thank all that they've been up to, and, and how they've set up. And I would thank the chief, but I wanna make sure the chief passes that on. From the there, to all the patrol officers that put themselves in danger every time they go and make contact with, uh, with the resident. Uh, we have been working through emergency services to try to make that a little easier on them, and, uh, maybe easier by what they have to do, but easier to figure out what they're giving in, and what they're running into, so they can properly prepare. Uh, it's, uh, it's good, uh, I wish everybody a, a belated, uh, Merry Easter. I hope the Easter was as good as it possibly could be, okay, under these circumstances. And, uh, I'd like to open, open up for, uh, a motion to adjourn.
So, yeah.
Oh, sorry, who said that?
Did you ask, so, move, one, two, three, second, how's that?
Okay, I have one for a second, but who, who was the first?
Anderson.
Alrighty, Anderson?
Yes.
Yeah.
Brockman?
Yes.
Debold?
Yes.
Kirkland? Luciano?
Yes.
And Warren?
Yes, and I'd also like to say thanks, Jim, for putting this together.
Yeah, yeah, Jimmy, he's been doing a good job, all right, we adjourn, no more dial-up.